Thirty meeting will come to order. City Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner Gault?
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Kayler?
Present. Tonight, we have Larry Dixon here to do our invocation. He's with the McCracken County Rescue and he's the chaplain there with the McCracken County Rescue, as well as many other things that you do. And we appreciate your service to our community. So if everyone will rise for the invocation.
Our dear heavenly fathers, I come before you tonight. As our pledge is, "One nation under God," we pray for your guidance, your forgiveness, and as well as your wisdom, that, as we all know in this room, when you bless each and every one, that this United States is one nation under God and its stars here. In your name, we pray for your guidance again for this meeting, for everybody in here. May you bless each and every one. Amen.
Commissioner Abraham, will you lead us in the pledge?
I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, until its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City manager, any additions or deletions?
No ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Abraham, you have the minutes tonight.
I do. I move that the reading of the minutes for August 9th, 2016 City Commission Meeting be waived and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Terrence Adams and Patrick White to the Paducah Area Transit Authority Board. These terms will expire June 30th, 2020.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in appointing Terrence Adams and Patrick White as members of the Paducah Area Transit Authority Board.
Second.
Okay, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
And I just think that Paducah Area Transit is doing an excellent job right now. They've been very open to hearing from the public on some things that a lot of citizens in the community wanted. And I applaud them for including those people in their comments. And they've responded to their desires. And I also want to thank the county for adding funding to Paducah Area Transit because it hasn't been that way in a few years. That's allowed Paducah Area Transit to provide that service to people that work at the mall and on the South Side and to extend those routes. So we certainly congratulate them on their success. Commissioner Rhodes, I believe you have a motion?
Yes ma'am. I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Documents: Irrevocable letter of credit for subdivision approval for Ridgewood Villas, bid for planning department, sale of 1908 Clay Street, Latreia Hensley.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order accepting the bid of Latreia Hensley in the amount of $1 for real property located at 1908 Clay Street and authorizing the mayor to execute a deed and all other documents necessary to complete the sale be adopted.
Second.
Hi Steve.
Good evening. If you have any questions, more reinvestment within our neighborhoods.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
We have some ordinances for adoption tonight. We've already discussed all these. So Commissioner Abraham, you have the first one?
I do. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance, an ordinance of the city of Paducah, Kentucky, authorizing and approving the appropriation of funds for purposes of engaging Federal Engineering, Inc. to perform consulting work for the city of Paducah 911 Communications Service Department. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance approves and authorizes the appropriation of the second installment of one-half of the funds necessary to engage Federal Engineering, Inc. to consulting work for the city of Paducah 911 Communications Service Department in planning, designing, and providing implementation assistance in the replacement of the current 911 system infrastructure, including a public safety radio wireless communication system, a 911 telephone system, and a computer aided dispatch system. A copy of the ordinance and the form of the basic document for such transaction will be on file in the office of the city clerk.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city of Paducah accepting a 2016-2017 Law Enforcement Service Fee Grant Award for operation of a one-year DUI enforcement program by the Paducah Police Department and authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Justice Cabinet. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city of Paducah hereby accepts grant funds in the amount of $7,396 through the Kentucky Justice Cabinet for a 2016-2017 Law Enforcement Service Fee Grant Award to be used by the Paducah Police Department for operation of a one-year DUI enforcement program and hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 6, Article 2, Section 6-33, Issuance Standards and Section 6-40 License Types and Fees of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends Chapter 6, Article 2, Section 6-33, entitled Issuance Standards and Section 6-40, entitled License Types and Fees, which regulate license to sell alcoholic beverages for the purpose of providing for issuance of non quota type III retail drink license to distilleries and bed and breakfast businesses in accordance with recent amendments to KRS 241.010, comma, 243.0305, and 243.086, enacted pursuant to the passage of Senate Bill 11 during the 2016 regular session of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Thank you gentlemen for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Absolutely. They help tourism.
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you for your investment in downtown Paducah. Just want to tell you that. We appreciate it. So we have some contract for services coming up. And before we start into these, we have Ken Wheeler here tonight, Dr. Tina Payne, Dr. Kressman. Thank you for being here. Ken wanted to just come tonight and talk about the success of the Community Scholarship Program. And I was telling him earlier that I met with a group of students about a month and a half ago because I just wanted to hear from them what they got from the program and what they felt was really helpful to them. And it was very eye-opening to me to hear it from them, from their personal stories, and especially the part about how successful you all are with the mentoring and the coaching. Because a lot of these kids maybe are the first in their families to go to college. And so they need that support. And you all go to really great lengths to make sure that these kids stay in college and that they do well and stay right on target. So it's a great program. Ken, do you want to?
Well said, Mayor. I think it really has been remarkably successful. And if you'll hark back six years when we first invented this program, you'll recall that no one in town knew what we were doing. And it is unique. We have not been able to find another program anywhere in the country that is exactly the same as the one that we currently have in place. That doesn't mean that it's not available for improvement, but I think the results are really astounding. When we met with you for the budget workshop earlier in the session, we did not yet have the data from the first group of students that had gone all the way through this program and graduated in May of this year. And we just finished looking at that data last week. So I thought I'd share just a few numbers with you that substantiate what we think we've seen. I'll just pick some individual statistics that we've researched. And I think they're all important in one way or another. The first one is the percent of students from McCracken County that have graduated from high school and gone on into community college, into West Kentucky. That number has gone up from 32% to 40%. That's an improvement of over 25%. And this is in the first, remember, this is in the first group of students that have gone through the program. So when they started six years ago as freshmen in high school, there was a lot that we had to learn on how to put the program together and how to improve it. Once students get into high school, a few other statistics. And these are things that frankly, we did not even think about when we put the program together. The grade point average for students that are operating under one of the scholarship programs this year was 2.7. For the students that are in that same group but were not eligible for the scholarship for one reason or another. They either were not in the county or they did not sign up for the scholarship. Their grade point was only 2.1. That's a dramatic difference. The number of credit hours that the students took, again, if you look at the students that were under the Community Scholarship Program, they averaged 29 credit hours over the last two, four years. That's 30 hours a year, which is pretty darn challenging. That same year's worth of students that did not participate in the scholarship program only completed 22 hours. So the students that were under the program had a 36% higher return on their time invested at the community college. Finally, the number of credentials that were gained after four semesters. And the reason I say credentials is because we emphasize from day one with this program that it's not just for two-year associate degree graduates. Anyone that finishes a one-year diploma or a one-year certificate is counted as being a success in this program. That number was for the students under the scholarship program, 30%. And for those that were not under the scholarship program, 22%. So it's a difference of 35% between those two groups of kids. So I think those all are indicative of the fact that the program definitely is a success. And I can't tell you how much we appreciate the way the city and the county have supported this program largely on faith because we could not guarantee results. And I think it's been remarkable that all the institutions, the donors that have supplied private funds, the city and county, the community college have all gone forth with this program year after year, not knowing for sure whether it was going to be a success or not. There's still fine tuning to be done and still more improvements to be made on the program. I also want to talk while we're here quickly about the effort that the state is putting forth to develop a statewide program. And most of you are aware that the bill that contained those requirements was vetoed by the governor. But he was adamant in saying that he was thoroughly in favor of the concept of having a statewide scholarship program. It's just that he didn't feel that the details and the analysis that were necessary to develop a good program had enough time to develop. So the money to support that funding from the state for the entire state of Kentucky is still in the budget. And the expectation is that in January of next year, when the legislature reconvenes, that there will be a new bill submitted that details the makeup and the requirements for the program. We've already had considerable conversation with folks in Frankfurt and with our local representatives about how that program will affect ours. And certainly, if there are funds available from the state for this very purpose statewide, then we'll want to make sure that we access those funds and can use them to support part of our program and hopefully to reduce the levy that we ask for the city and the county and the private donors for. It's early to say that we've been successful, but I think we're going to work hard to make sure that there's language in the bill, if it's in fact moves forward, that would ensure that communities like ours that want to go above and beyond the bare minimum that the state may provide in terms of support and funding are not excluded from being able to do that. And we've had good support from our local legislators already in that concept. So we'll know more about that as the session convenes. I'd like just to close by reading one of the comments that the mayor alluded to. This is from a focus group that went on at the college, in addition to the one that you had, Mayor. But I thought this one was really worth reading. This is from one of the students that just graduated from the community college. "The Community Scholars Program is not just a scholarship. It's a way of living." And it sort of speaks as if you don't just dive into college and then you don't hear from them again until it's time for you to graduate. No. You go to these people. You go to Lisa Stevenson, you go to Mr. Hill, and you talk to them every single day. They keep in touch with you, in contact with you, and things like that. They even talk to your teachers on a regular basis. They check into the classrooms. It's totally different than just receiving a scholarship and you not even know who the scholarship committee is. That's what you think of the program. So I can't think of any better testimony than things like that. Happy to answer any questions.
Well, I don't have any questions, sir. But I just want to comment that if you're going to take, if you're going to risk, you mentioned that when you guys first came up with this idea, didn't know if it was going to work or not. But it's education. And everybody in the room, no matter what side of the aisle you sit, realize that, you know, the more educated populace we have, the more successful citizen we have. And so regardless of what the state does, I think with the numbers that you've talked about, the data that's been collected, when the state comes around and doing whatever, if they're going to do it, and I think our program has kind of set the standard for that, not only with the initiative, but with the follow-up. Comments you just read. And so if there are funds that's going to be going out to communities to enhance what they're doing, you want to give those funds to communities that shown the wherewithal to make sure that these young people are successful by doing that follow-up. And you have the data to support that. So I applaud the efforts and it's a great program.
Well, and we're certainly going to make sure that we offer our services to the state as they proceed with developing whatever state program comes up. I don't know that we need to get recognition for that, but I think it's important that having learned some lessons from it, it's made sense, so.
And if you could send those statistics that you just read to us, to all the commissioners?
Sure.
We'd like to have that. I mean, we've written notes.
I will. We'll have a more complete report out in a couple of weeks, but I didn't want to overload you with data tonight, so.
Well, just send us all of it. It'd be good reading.
Good.
And I did have a question. Is there a requirement, a GPA requirement, to stay in that program?
2.5 is the requirement.
But most of them had a 2.7 average.
Yes, right. And that's after they've been in the program for two years. So that's very satisfactory.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Tina.
Good to see you.
Dr. Kressman, thank you. Okay, so we'll go into our contracts for service. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for services with the Greater Paducah Economic Development Council for specific services that will include services for Entropaduca. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Greater Paducah Economic Development Council in the amount of $250,000 to be paid in equal quarterly allocations of $62,500 for performance of services as outlined in said contract. Further, this contract will include services for Entropaduca in the amount of $50,000 to be paid in equal quarterly allocations of $12,500. This contract shall expire June 30th, 2017.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc. for the Community Scholarship Program. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc. in the amount of $125,000 for the Community Scholarship Program. This contract shall expire June 30th, 2017.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Gault?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc. for the two locations of the Paducah School of Art. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc. in the amount of $75,000 to be paid in equal quarterly allocations of $18,750. The funds will be used for operational expenses, which shall include but not be limited to utilities, repairs, and other operating expenses for the two locations of the Paducah School of Art located at 905 Harrison Street and 919 Madison Street. This contract shall expire June 30th, 2017.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Good luck with your scholarship fundraiser coming up in September. Commissioner Rhodes?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Paducah Area Transit System for public transportation services. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Paducah Area Transit System in the amount of $215,000 to be paid in equal quarterly allocations of $53,750 for public transportation services for Paducah McCracken County area. This contract expires June 30th, 2017.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with the Luther F. Carson Four River Center, Inc. for specific services. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with the Luther F. Carson Four River Center, Inc. in the amount of $63,325 to provide an extensive youth performance schedule and continue with their tradition of the Class Act series. This contract shall expire June 30th, 2017.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Barclay Regional Airport for providing general aviation and air carrier services. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Barclay Regional Airport in the amount of $110,000 payable in quarterly installment of $27,500 each for providing general aviation and air carrier services to the citizens of McCracken County and surrounding regions. This contract shall expire June 30th, 2017.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. We have three ordinances for introduction tonight. Commissioner Gault, you have the first one?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city of Paducah, Kentucky, approving a professional service agreement for engineering design services required to complete the project plans for flood control pump stations number two and number nine, authorizing additional construction administration and inspection services during the construction of the project and authorizing the execution of said contract. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city hereby approves the professional service agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc. for engineering design services required to complete the project plans for flood control pump stations number two and number nine. The city also agrees for HDR to provide construction administration and inspection services during the construction of the project. The total amount for the contract for all services will not exceed $132,500. Further, the mayor of the city is hereby authorized to execute the agreement.
Second.
Mayor Commission, you'll recall, I brought an MOU and also an amendment to a current MOU that we have here a couple of weeks ago that aligned us to be able to do this work and receive in-kind. For the monies we spend, we will get in-kind on our match of a project in the future with Corps of Engineers when they do this work. I've had representatives from HDR here tonight, Kyle Guthrie and Michael Hansen, that will be assisting us with this work as we move forward. But we will be getting in-kind credit for this project.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Rhodes?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the execution of an agreement and all documents relating thereto with the US Department of Justice for a 2016-2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Accountability Grant through the US Department of Justice to be used by the Paducah Police. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city of Paducah hereby approves the execution of a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the US Department of Justice for a 2016-2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Accountability Grant in the amount of $11,963 to be used by the Paducah Police Department to purchase mobile radios. The local match is required.
Second.
My Chief?
Hello, good evening, Mayor Commission. This is the JAG grant, which you all see annually. It can be used for equipment only. This year, we applied for four mobile radios, which are the radios that go inside the car. It is to replace older aging radios. This, these are not four additional, um, but we do have a balance of $774 in overage there that I will be taking out of my general fund budget to, uh, pay for those.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to execute addendum number three to the agreement to employ Jeffrey A. Peterson as Paducah City Manager. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the city hereby approves an addendum to the employment agreement with Jeffrey Peterson and authorizes the mayor to execute said addendum. The changes are as follows, term of agreement increase effective July 26, 2016 to July 26, 2019, a salary increased to $165,897 annually, and an allowance for a portion of unused sick leave to be paid out upon resignation.
Second?
Any discussion? Thank you, Jeff, for your email that you sent.
Well, I hope it meets everybody's expectations. If not, I'd be happy to visit with you about anything more.
And thank you for many good years of service. Look for a few more.
I look forward to it.
All right. Uh, we'll go into our workshop on our neighborhood redevelopment objectives discussion.
Did you want me to go ahead or?
Well, as, I'm gonna just give a brief leading, um, a couple of things. As everybody knows, the, uh, multi-year effort with Fountain Avenue is, uh, drawing to a successful conclusion. We had some discussion about that at Budget Time, and we also visited during our, uh, next steps workshop from our citizen survey about a process to identify the next, uh, effort, uh, in terms of neighborhood revitalization. So in visiting with Steve, we thought the best way to start that out would be to, uh, engage the commission in some review and discussion about what it is we really want to accomplish with, with a neighborhood revitalization project, whether it be the, the last one we had or perhaps the next one, so that we can get some, um, understanding, uh, and consensus throughout, uh, the commission and the community about what this has been all about, uh, because the city does expend considerable resources for this, and of course, we've had some, uh, wonderful outcomes, and we look forward to, uh, doing that again. So the start of that process tonight is to talk a little bit about neighborhood revitalization and what some of the objectives have been and what they might be, and then, uh, we're also going to, uh, suggest a, a process to use to review optional areas for consideration for the city's next, uh, neighborhood revitalization program. With that, Steve?
Thank you, sir. Uh, tonight, uh, we're gonna be looking at, uh, neighborhood revitalization principles in general. Uh, we're also gonna be looking at, uh, general goals and objectives that we can look at through the neighborhood revitalization process, and just some considerations for how we may go, things we look at when we start looking at neighborhood selection. Um, I think, first of all, I, I'd like to think, think about what is a healthy neighborhood, whether it be a healthy neighborhood in our community right now or a neighborhood that's recently been revitalized. And, and I took these two, uh, points, uh, out, and I think they're really important. And the first is that a place where it makes economic and emotional sense for people to invest time, energy, and money, uh, in quotations. This is front and center when you have a healthy neighborhood or you have a successfully revitalized neighborhood. These are places that people want to be at the end of the process. They're investing their money and their time. And secondly, it's a place where neighbors can successfully manage day-to-day neighborhood-related issues. Um, an important question, but a difficult question that I think we need to ask, and that is perhaps the most difficult, but ultimately most important question for the next neighborhood is this, what will make or makes the next neighborhood attractive enough for people to be willing to reinvest their money and live in the neighborhood when they have the means to live elsewhere in other currently desirable neighborhoods? Uh, so as we start looking, um, at the selection criteria, we'll be looking at pros and cons of all the neighborhoods, but which neighborhood also, uh, is most likely to attract that private reinvestment towards the end? That's a consideration. Um, how do we change neighborhoods? Uh, one of the things we do is we read the neighborhoods to find out what's working and what's not working in terms of people's decisions to invest or not to invest. Has it been 40 years since a new house has been built i- in a neighborhood? If so, why is that? What's, what's wrong? What do we need to take a look at? So we need to diagnose those underlying issues that led to the decline. Uh, you know, once again, what went wrong? Is it low maintenance rentals? Uh, is it property maintenance, the condition of the houses? Is it crimes, drugs, infrastructure? Uh, the list goes on. Um, we need to set outcomes and indicators of progress based on those outcomes. Are people willing to invest without gap financing? Uh, that's an outcome that we know, uh, the program has been successful. We need to choose strategies that will best achieve those outcomes. Um, we need to make sure the neighborhood plan is comprehensive and goal-oriented. Um, one of the first things that we do once a neighborhood has been selected is produce that full neighborhood revitalization plan with all those outcomes within that plan. Uh, we also need to have the organizational capacity to deliver revitalization strategy and implement those strategies. Uh, as you know, both in Fountain Avenue and Lower Town, we had, um, a person, a sole person that, uh, woke up every day, and that's what they count, uh, concentrated on, and I think that's very important for the success of any revitalization strategy. The next neighborhood plan should follow the same comprehensive approach as Lower Town and Fa- Fountain Avenue. Uh, in my opinion, both of them have worked. If you look back at the implementation strategy within both of those plans, you can pretty much check off the things that we've accomplished that we said we were gonna do at the beginning. That's the comprehensive approach. Uh, it should incorporate the team approach involving neighborhood residents. Residents are always first, citizens and city departments. Um, one of the first things that we do once a neighborhood is selected is we go out to those neighborhood, and we go out to that neighborhood. We set up a series, five or 10 meetings with the public, invite them to come and ask them, what do you like about your neighborhood? What do you dislike about your neighborhood? What do you want to see changed in your neighborhood? And the interesting thing is, is what you want to see changed in your neighborhood, that becomes part of your implementation strategy. So you're actually accomplishing the goals that the neighborhood actually wants at the beginning. Um, in my opinion, the planning department should be the lead on the project. Uh, other city departments are intimately involved. Uh, that includes police, parks, public works, engineering public works. Uh, most importantly, though, is probably fire prevention division as it relates to nuisance codes and building codes within any neighborhood, I believe, that we select. Um, like Fountain Avenue, I believe the next neighborhood, uh, should rely heavily on attracting area market rate investment back to town. Uh, certainly, um, incentives in place at the beginning to attract that, uh, both public and private investment, uh, but times are different now than they were at the time of Lower Town. Right now, we're required to have pre-apraisals on property. Uh, the pre-apraisals at the beginning of, of any project that I see in these neighborhoods are gonna come in much lower than, uh, what the actual construction cost or rehab costs are. Um, so those incentives are put in place early on, but we, at the end of it, we want to attract market rate, uh, private reinvestment into that neighborhood. Uh, planning offers a few tools, including design guidelines, mixed-use zoning, and incentives. Uh, the middle one there, design guidelines, in Lower Town and Fountain Avenue, we both created design guidelines and then handed those over to the Historic and Architecture Review Commission. My initial thought on that is, is that most likely our next neighborhood, we may step back from that a little bit, incorporate some design guidelines so we have some consistency, but maybe have those guidelines within our zoning and not necessarily go before the Historic and Architecture Review Commission. That's something we'll discuss. Um, and the last one, uh, in all areas and all neighborhoods, code enforcement will be an integral part of the process. Some general goals and objectives, um, I believe we should continue to concentrate the, uh, most of the resources to a well-defined target area, which creates ma- maximum impact on the public's perception of neighborhood improvements. Uh, it's creating that vision and selling your vision within the neighborhood within that well-defined area. We need to engage residents for input, express the positives and negatives I spoke about earlier. We need to provide public incentives to encourage private sector investment. There needs to be mixed income homeownership opportunities. I think Fountain Avenue was a good mixture in the beginning of, of that process. We relied somewhat on NSP and home programs, uh, for low to moderate income families. Um, if you remember, though, one of the important things that we did is, is we went out, uh, into adjacent neighborhoods and even that neighborhood and looked at the design of the houses, of what they looked like during that time period of the 1930s. They had front porches, they had big windows, they had crawl spaces, they were made of brick. So we made sure that that public investment that was put back in the neighborhood fit into the neighborhood, and the people that lived in those houses were, were proud of them. It also helped bring the appraisals up within that neighborhood. The last one is adopt, adopt a comprehensive approach drawing on all city departments, as I spoke of earlier. We may need to improve infrastructure to support future redevelopment. Most likely, uh, we're gonna need to create some type of strategy for reducing crime and drug activity so that resident investors view the neighborhood as a safe place. Might have to improve recreational opportunities depending which neighborhood we choose to go with. Most likely, we would want to increase residents' knowledge of available public transportation, of the city sidewalk policy, property maintenance codes, and nuisance code. If you remember in Fountain Avenue, working with Midtown Alliance, we created a series of DVDs, and we handed those DVDs out to residents that talked about the, the building process, the rehabilitation process, all those types of things that sometimes can overwhelm the property owners that live in, uh, that neighborhood. We also need to create a strong, a strong sense of place where people want to live We'll want to most likely stabilize declining neighborhood housing stock by enforcing nuisance and building codes. Uh, ensure that rental property in the neighborhood is decent, safe, and sanitary. That's probably upfront, one of the first things that will come out of an implementation strategy for the next neighborhood. Utilize the design guidelines I spoke of earlier. Uh, could be encouraging mixed-use developments, depends which neighborhood we look at, but uh, there could be opportunities, uh, for mixed use. Design additional pre-approved infill house plans that complement the character of the next neighborhoods, uh, that can be used by potential investors. A lot of the private investment that we're seeing in Fountain Avenue right now are actually using our house plans. The next neighborhood we go into, uh, there could be different types of, uh, of housing, so I would like to look at that, uh, get some new housing plans designed and pre-approved. Uh, want to encourage the development of a strong neighborhood association, uh, and assist with the creation, most likely, of a neighborhood watch organization. Some other considerations for neighborhood selection, what is the condition of the housing stock within the neighborhood? Uh, you know, it could be graded from A to B. I'm sorry, um, you know, A, B, C, D. How many of those houses, uh, are condemned? Uh, are those houses past their economic life? Do some of them need to come down? What type of available land is there for future infill? Uh, how many abandoned structures? The number of existing, uh, neighborhood anchors and assets? Is the proper infrastructure in place? Uh, and is public transportation safe? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, close? What type of private investment and commercial opportunities exist within the next neighborhood? Is it close proximity to schools, shopping, pharmacies, social services? Is the walkability, is that good within the neighborhood? Are there neighborhood job opportunities? Are there adjacent recreational facilities? And if there are adjacent recreational facilities, do they need to be improved? To work with that neighborhood and the different, different demographic that's in that neighborhood? Uh, what is the homeownership versus rental ratio? I believe when we started Fountain Avenue, we were 70% rental, 30% homeownership. Uh, that's approximately 50/50 right now. Uh, certainly, there's been a trend national-wide for more rental, so each neighborhood, I think it'll be a little bit different going in on what we think a healthy, uh, relationship is. What are the crime rate statistics when we start out? And that really is, uh, sums up, uh, the presentation and some considerations for the, uh, neighborhood selection, and, uh, Jeff, would you like me to go ahead and maybe offer, um, the extra?
Well, we recognize there's a lot there, and the commission might want some time to mull those over or sort them out, whatever your pleasure might be. I think that, uh, the fact is that, uh, a lot of what you just saw sort of is defined by Fountain Avenue or defines Fountain Avenue, and it's been such a great success. Obviously, there's a strong temptation to, you know, try to replicate a lot of that if, if we can, but that's not to say that's the only model that exists or the only strategies that, that might exist, so, um, that's up to you all to determine. Um, I just want to mention that to you to let you know you're in control of this process, and if you want to go in a different direction, you certainly may. Uh, if that information that you saw is, uh, generally the direction you want to go, uh, Steve has, uh, a suggestion of, of a process that would follow this. Uh, maybe you'd like to hear that and then determine at what step you, you are or, or want to be.
I'd like to...
Yeah.
I think, um, I talked with Steve a little bit earlier too, and the city manager and, um, what he's going to, uh, talk about with, um, direction for one of our boards, and I think you've used, excuse me, you've used them some in Fountain Avenue too, the Urban Renewal Board.
Yes, the Urban Renewal and Community Development Board is actually set up through CARES Chapter 99, and they're the board that has authority to oversee redevelopment of our neighborhoods. Uh, we, uh, we prepare the neighborhood plan, it's, uh, it's approved by them, forwarded onto the commission for adoption for compliance of state statute. But this board meets monthly. Uh, on an average month, uh, there may be five to 10 applications come before them. They have the oversight of both Lower Town and Neighborhood. Anytime there's a property transferred, it goes before the Urban Renewal. Anytime there's a, uh, a property bought, it goes before Urban Renewal. Um, all sales transactions go through them, but it's not just the transactions, it's the full development plans that go to them that they consider, weigh with different types of proposals. Um, neighborhood revitalization is what they're about. Uh, the suggestion is, is that, um, we sit down with them and really talk about a strategy to how, to how to go through the, um, you know, the neighborhood selection, um, you know, kind of go through some of the, the ideas that we have and, um, and, and review that, and maybe come up with, um, several neighborhoods, um, and, um, really, I think, prepare maybe a, a white paper on each one of the pros and cons of the neighborhood and how a neighborhood revitalization strategy may look for that neighborhood, because as Jeff said, this somewhat follows Fountain Avenue, but every neighborhood, there will be a different set of strategies to accomplish the end, the end goal. Uh, and along with that white paper on each neighborhood, possibly, um, you know, also submitting the demographic information, the basic information of the makeup of the neighborhood, uh, to this board, so not only do you have the, the written report, but also some, some demographic and statistics.
And then we'll come back to the city commission then.
And then come back to the city commission for a presentation on whatever, how many neighborhoods you would like.
And, and we don't want this to, um, to seem like a contest between neighborhoods. It's really, and by using the Urban Renewal Board, I think that, you know, they define some of the goals that we have within each of those neighborhoods that, um, that you all may present to them, and makes a decision easier because you have some statistics behind it, and you're not just going, I want that neighborhood, because each, each neighborhood has its own strengths and weaknesses.
Yeah. Yeah, there'd be, you know, land use characteristics for each of them that we present to you, uh, the number of residents, the number of vacant residents, the number of houses, rental, homeownership. That type of basic information would also be, uh, submitted, and then some of the strengths and weaknesses of each neighborhood.
Because we have more than we can, we can do.
It's, it's interesting because it's really difficult to rank a neighborhood, because in one neighborhood, a, a weakness could be a strength in another neighborhood, depending on the strategy that you're using for revitalization. If it's new infill construction that you're really gonna be going after, then maybe having some more vacant properties is a positive. In another neighborhood, it may be that you've got that critical mass of really good architecture, and that's the positive in the neighborhood because of the str- you know, the strength of existing housing stock. So it becomes difficult to rank that type of thing. But you can certainly discuss it.
The main goal is, is more investment in the city, bringing more families back to the city, having safe, healthy neighborhoods.
Absolutely.
That's what we want. Vitality. Thank you. Thank you.
Up to it.
Thank you.
He always hops. City managers report?
I think that covers it for the evening. Thank you.
Any commissioner comments tonight? Any public comments? We don't have an executive session tonight, so meetings adjourned.